Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busenow?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
Trustee Oliver is absent.
May I have a motion to omit Mr. Oliver's name for roll call?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to refrain from calling Trustee Oliver during roll call vote.
Motion by Ms. Posey. Support. Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. And I have a request to add on one item. It will be number 11A, and that is a request for a date for a public hearing for the 2020 Michigan National Resources Grant applications. Other than that, does anyone else have an addition or correction to the agenda?
Hearing none, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Busenow to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the bills is next. As usual, there are two bill runs. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Nevers.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next will be the approval of the previous meeting minutes, those being from February 12th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Hearing none, I make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from February 12th, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next is the closed session. And since I refused myself, I abstain from abusing approving the closed session minutes. Is there a motion to accept the closed session minutes?
Madam Chair, the special meeting, those aren't those closed session meetings. It's not that one. The special meeting was on the 19th.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So you can go on this one.
You're right. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from February 12th.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The consent agenda items are routine items that come before the board frequently. If you wish to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is comments on agenda items only. If you wish to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
John Parkinson. My address is on file at the clerk's office. I'd like to speak about item number 10 on the agenda. The request to purchase fire nozzles in the amount of $13,070.50. So I'm going to direct this to the chief, if the board doesn't mind, since he is the one requesting the amount. Chief Phillips, while I'm all for public safety and the funding for new and improved fire suppression devices, I have to ask a few questions. Is there a reason we need new nozzles other than the age? Are any of ours not working? Can they be repaired versus replaced? And will every fire station get a new nozzle? What is the expected lifespan on the nozzles? And what does $13,070.50 get us? How many nozzles is that? Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll move on to new business. First item is Water and Sewer Department, and that is to request approval to pay the construction estimate number seven for 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning. Mr. Wangland.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. Water and Sewer is in front of you tonight. Requesting we approve Pay Cert. number seven. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $13,000. Water and Sewer, as well as Engineering, has reviewed this, and we are recommending we move forward. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the pay construction estimate number seven, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning CCTV investigation project number 0249-0162 in the amount of $13,000.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to approve payment number seven as requested. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. And the next one is approval to pay construction pay estimate number eight for the same exact thing. Any questions for Mr. Wangland on this one?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the pay construction estimate numbers eight, 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning CCTV investigation project number 0249-0162 in the amount of $47,173.90 to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Ordered by Ms. Goodhue to approve the construction pay estimate number eight. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Next, we have the Engineering Department, and this is to request permission to execute a cost-sharing agreement for construction costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the Garfield Road extension from 22 Mile to 23 Mile. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. Previously, the township had executed a cost-sharing agreement for the design right-of-way acquisition and whatnot for the entire stretch of Garfield Road that is planned to be connected between 22 Mile and 25 Mile. They have proceeded with the design. A topographic survey is done. They're proceeding with the design in the first phase, which is the 22 Mile to 23 Mile segment. They've progressed far enough that they're comfortable putting together a cost estimate that is before you tonight in this cost-sharing agreement. The township's portion of that is 60% of the overall construction cost, which amounts to $1,416,000. And they're asking the township to execute this cost-sharing agreement so they can proceed with finishing the design and sending the project out to bid. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Van Tiflin, me and you spoke about this before, and there's a couple people on the board that have been to some of these meetings, so they probably were more comfortable with some of this as far as knowing the answers to this. But I'm sure there's some residents that, because they were at some meetings that I was not at. You gave me some great answers to some questions I had, and I'm sure residents might have the same questions about this. We are right now going to execute this agreement, and the share cost agreement, or the cost-share agreement says that we are going to give the county $1.4 million. But I could not find where it's on the schedule to be done. So they want that money immediately, even though it's not on their schedule. Could you maybe explain that to everybody? Because I'm comfortable with the answers you gave me, but I think it's legitimate of, okay, where's that money going? And what if it doesn't get approved? All of a sudden, they have $1.4 million Macomb tax dollars there.
Yeah, I'm not sure what's on their schedule. All I can tell you is what we've been told in the meetings that we've had with them. We meet with them almost monthly now to go over all of our road projects. But they've been telling us for probably since October, their goal is to have all the design done in this first phase out to bid in May for construction yet this season. They still have some details to work out with the right-of-way acquisition. There's a pipeline. Sonoco has a pipeline that runs through the right-of-way in the south half of the section, just north of 22 Mile. So they have to work out some details with them on the property transfer. There are some other issues with regard to county drains and how they're going to design it so they don't block drainage. But those are issues that they'll continue to work out between now and May, when the goal is to have it out to bid. But assuming that all of those details are worked out and we are able to acquire the right-of-way, then they'll put it out to bid and build it this year. If something happens, then it would go to next year, next year's construction program. But they would, I think, essentially put the money into an account and have that money sitting there for when they actually go out to bid and they have to pay the contractor.
Good.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to add to what Mr. Van Tiflin, I'm part of that group that meets with Macomb County Department of Roads, and I can attest to the fact that we've discussed Garfield extensively. One of the continuous things that we hear from our residents is, what are we doing about the roads? And although our hands are tied and we're limited in what we can do to fix the roads in Macomb Township, what we can do as a board is approve a cost-sharing agreement with the Macomb County Department of Roads, which helps us to get some of our projects prioritized and also helps us to expedite roads getting improved and worked on. So Garfield is a great improvement that will help alleviate some of the congestion on Romeo Plank. So, and I think the last time we spoke, they were anticipating starting this project June of 2020, correct?
That is correct, yes.
So hopefully, we can get that moving in June, and it'll alleviate some of that traffic and congestion on Romeo Plank.
And I just wanted to follow up, Madam Chair. The reason I ask those questions is because earlier on, maybe fall or last summer, they were very aggressive marketing campaign about which roads they were going to fix in all the municipalities, and this wasn't on it. And that's just why I think it's a legitimate question that we all have of, maybe they will, maybe they'll update the PDF, and it will show that the project's ready to go.
If I may, Madam Chair, just to add to that, I think that has a lot to do with these continuous meetings that we've been holding and the pressure that we've put on for some of these projects. And so it was able, we were able to get this done.
Good. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to authorize the supervisor to execute a cost-sharing agreement for construction costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the Garfield Road extension for 22 Mile Road to 23 Mile Road.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to grant permission to enter this cost-sharing agreement. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Now, we have a human resources item, and that is request to advance an employee from probationary status. The employee number is 2567. Ms. Arv?
Thank you. Madam Supervisor, Board of Trustees, I'm here tonight to request authorization to allow employee 2567 to advance from probationary status. This employee was hired on September 3rd of 2019. The position that they're in is covered under the agreement between the township and the AFSCME Local 1917. Under that collective bargaining agreement, Article 13 stipulates for probationary employees that a probationary period for a new employee entering the bargaining unit, including people who are transferred into the bargaining unit from another union, shall serve a probationary period of, for the first 180 days consecutive calendar days. I have spoken with the department head, and they are requesting advancement of this employee. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve advancement of employee 2567 from probationary status as of March 1st, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue, or Ms. Smith, to approve the advancement of employee number 2567 from probationary status as of March 1st. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Fire Department, and Chief Phillips is here to request the purchase of fire nozzles. Chief Phillips, please.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval this evening to purchase new fire hose nozzles in the amount of $13,070.50. The nozzles will replace those that are currently in service and approximately 15 years old. The specifications were placed on mitten on January 2nd. Sealed bids were due on January 16th and were opened in the boardroom immediately following the 10:00 AM deadline. Total of five bids were received with bids ranging in price from $13,070.50 to $22,428. The entire bid process was conducted by the township's purchasing specialist, and I've included her recommendation of award. This purchase was included in the current budget, and with that, I'm recommending the approval to purchase the fire hose, the fire nozzles from Douglas Safety Systems in the amount of $13,070.50. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to request the purchase of the fire nozzles in the amount of $13,070.50.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Busenow to approve this purchase. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the supervisor's office, I have to appoint a Board of Trustees liaison to the Planning Commission. Mr. Oliver has resigned as the chairman of the Planning Commission as he cannot hold two positions. Since becoming a trustee, he can be appointed to the liaison position. I would recommend to you that Mr. Oliver be approved to fulfill the term vacancy expiring November 20th of 2020. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Oliver as the board member to serve as liaison to the Planning Commission.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Nevers.
Ms. Smith.
Oh, Ms. Smith.
I think it was Kathy.
To appoint trustee Charles Oliver to serve as the liaison for the Planning Commission. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. And the add-on is a request to schedule a public hearing. The Six Rivers Conservancy is requesting a date for a public hearing for the 2020 Nat- Michigan National, oops, let me start that again, for the 2020 Michigan Natural Resources Grant. The suggested date is March 11th, 2020. Mr. Pierce has already put this in the newspaper for advertisements. Alls we need is the date of March 11th in a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to schedule the public hearing for Michigan Natural Resource Grant on March 11th, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to set March 11th, 2020 as the public hearing date. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. We have Parks and Recreation Department asking for tree removal. Mr. Van Tiflin, you're going to handle this this evening?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, board members. On February 18th, the township took bids on, for tree removal at the future home of the Whitney Macomb Park at 24 and Foss. The reason that we need to do the tree work before the park is constructed is there's an environmental issue having to do with a bat, and we need to stake the trees down before, I believe it's April 1st, or we would have to wait until November in order to take those trees down. And our plan right now is to put the park under construction this fall, and it would be too late to take the trees down later. So, anyway, on February 18th, we received two bids from contractors to take the trees down. The lowest bid was $139,050. The highest bid was $164,350. We have reviewed the low bidder, Alpine Tree Services, and we are recommending approval of Alpine for $139,000. We also have one other issue that has come up with regard to their insurance. It came up this week after the board packet was put together. They are having trouble with obtaining the automobile insurance that is required by the township in specifications. They have given us their, what they propose to as an alternate. I have talked to Mr. Meehan about that, and he has reviewed the document and is recommending that we basically approve a exception to the township's requirements while he is reviewing the other insurance requirements for all the other projects that we are in the process of bidding. So we would recommend approval of Alpine with those two, with the bid amount, as well as the insurance exception. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions?
Mr. Van Tiflin, is it the exception to an insurance policy, or insurance agreement policy?
It's a coverage requirement. We require $2 million of automobile liability insurance coverage. They are proposing to handle that as part of a umbrella policy. They're giving us $2 extra million in umbrella policy instead of the extra million dollars in the auto coverage.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll make a motion to award the tree removal bid to Alpine Tree Service for a price of
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Madam Chair, if I may amend the motion to include the, approve the exception to the insurance coverage requirement?
Yes. Please. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have general counsel update, and this is on Sycamore Hollow, First Amendment to the Consent Judgment. Mr. Meehan?
Yes. I'm in the process of...
Madam Chair, may I stop? Mr. Meehan, you'll have to go to the podium because they can't record you for broadcast media. Thank you.
We have looked at this project and the consent judgment as it relates to the project and the terms and conditions. And as I understand it, talking with Jim, we are asking the board to approve it at this point in time so we can move forward.
Anyone have any questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize the attorney to execute the attached First Amendment to Consent judgment dated October 25th, 2007.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue.
Ms. Smith.
Ms. Smith. To authorize legal counsel to sign the consent judgment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Meehan. The next is public comments?
Thank you. Was there going to be a section for me to give a general update?
It's now. Sure. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So a couple quick updates that I want to give to you. As I've stepped into this process rather abruptly and have been tackling a lot of issues, I've worked with Jim very hard to keep the, his department and the joining partners going well. We've also jumped in to assist the Fire Department individuals who are being sequestered for depositions and being asked to provide depositions on issues that, nothing dealing with the township but having more to deal with, a personal injury accident that the Fire Department individuals may or may not have seen. Doing our best to ensure that proper and honest testimony is being provided. Third, as you know, in our last meeting that we had, the special meeting, the board conducted the first part of the hearing as it relates to your prior counsel. I have put together the charge as the board had approved at last meeting, and I have provided that to plaintiff's counsel at that point in time. And I believe they have seven days or 10 days. I'm not remembering exactly what was put into the charge for them to contact us and determine whether or not they wish for the employee to appear before the board with their attorney to give his side of the story so that we can be in full compliance with the laudermail hearing. And then last but not least, you know, this is an issue that I have been following. You know, I have, the board may recall through a memo that they received from your clerk that an issue had come up that some of you had been made aware of almost immediately, and others had been made aware general about the, your supervisor and issues involving potential problems that had occurred in the prior. None of us on this board or this attorney is aware of what those specific issues are in detail and what has happened. But nonetheless, there was enough concern on my behalf when I had found out about it to ensure that the township supervisor self-reported, to ensure that if there was any wrongdoing that that would be reported and determined. At the same time, the clerk had requested what was the action for this board to take. And again, none of us having the detail of what had actually gone on or what the specifics were and that were, those were held really in the township supervisor's purview, and she wasn't required to tell us. I had issued a memorandum to all of you board members that I think Ms. Posey had carried out to you that basically indicated that self-reporting was the requirement to be made. And at that point in time, once that occurred, we would decide where we go next based upon what the authorities would decide to do. I'm basically just informing you today that I have not been contacted by the authorities on one way or the other. There are a lot of rumors out there that the authorities do not believe or are not fulfilling or finding that there's a basis to go forward. I don't know that to be true at all. I don't know anything to be true, other than the one thing I know to be true is I haven't been contacted. I will keep the board apprised of whether I am contacted or not, and I would suggest that if no contact continues to happen for a period of another two to three weeks, that at that point in time, we may need to begin to take some additional actions to determine whether or not there's a problem that exists or had existed in the past. But at this point in time, my advice to you is you've met your requirement by number one, having some knowledge or information sufficient enough to have one of you call me, and then to have one of you take the memo that I have provided out to everyone indicating that my recommendation was, and the township supervisor had followed in terms of self-reporting. And I fully would have expected by now, it's been two and a half to three weeks, that we would have gotten some report back. We just haven't, and I will be monitoring this. And in addition, I will be reaching out to whom I understand to be her counsel. Other than that, I have no other update for you all, other than the issues and facts come hard and fast here. You guys are a very aggressive and fantastic team to work with, so I want to thank you all for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you.
I have a question, sir.
Public comments, and this is on non-agenda items. Please remember, there is a three-minute time limit.
Hello again, John Parkinson. Since my comments at the special meeting on February 19th were squashed, and I'm sure Open Meetings Act violation had occurred, I will make my comments known tonight. Ms. Dunn, many times through the years, many residents have asked you to resign. You have failed to protect the township and serve the residents you were elected to. Your position started with a scandal and most likely will end with one. To you and any other member who sits on the board, if you have wronged me, my family, or residents you serve, I personally forgive you. However, it doesn't make it right. Ms. Dunn, we as the residents deserve to know the truth. In fact, we demand the truth. So I'd like to ask all the board members a simple question. I'd like your... I'd like your replies either now or at the trustee comments at the end of the meeting. Trustee Nevers, have you taken money from Dino Bucci? Trustee Bosno, have you taken money from Dino Bucci? Trustee Smith, have you taken money from Dino Bucci? Treasurer Goodhew, have you taken money from Dino Bucci? Clerk Posey, have you taken money from Dino Bucci? And last but not least, Janet Dunn, have you taken money from Dino Bucci? Thank you.
Tom Ranger, five thousand West Utica Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. Good evening, Board of Trustees and McComb Township citizens. I'm here tonight to give the citizens of McComb Township a heads-up on a tax increase less than two weeks from now. On Tuesday, March tenth, there's an election vote concerning a two-plus mil tax increase for all taxpayers of McComb County. The first millage is for an additional one-point-nine mills sponsored by the bureaucrats of the McComb Intermediate School District. I ask, when is enough is enough? I'm already paying almost fourteen mills in property taxes for state education and an additional request for one-point-nine mills is absolutely ridiculous. For example, if the taxable value of your home is a hundred thousand dollars, your taxes will go up a hundred and ninety dollars. The second tax millage is a point-two mil tax renewal for the Detroit Institute of Arts. What the DIA bureaucrats fail to tell you and all those propaganda pamphlets you've all been receiving in the mail is, for starters, they lied. This millage was never supposed to be renewed in the first place and that they're deviously requesting this millage two years before it even expires in a traditionally low turnout election. The art bureaucrats also conveniently fail to mention that their art director, Mr. Salvador Salort Pons, is getting a hundred thousand dollar a year raise this year, bringing his salary to four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. All taxpayer paid, an outrageous amount of money for any bureaucrat. It's no wonder they want a tax millage. I'm recently retired and living on a modest fixed income. These two millages will cost me an additional two-hundred dollars a year and when my expenses go up, it has to come from my personal savings, which is a finite amount. I'm sick and tired of these bureaucrats treating me and other taxpayers like a bottomless money grab bag. I urge the citizens of McComb Township to go out and vote Tuesday, March tenth and stand together and say no to any new taxes and vote no on both of these money grabs. And be forewarned, a new one-mil McComb County jail prison tax increases in the works for an early August election date. This means a potential three-mil property tax increase in less than six months. Hang on to your wallets.
Anyone else? Very well, seeing no one, we will move on now to board comments. Trustees.
Madam Chair, Mr. Parkinson, I can tell you, I have never taken any money from Mr. Bucci.
Are you done with all your comments?
I am.
Okay, all right. Madam Chair, I'm going to have a couple more comments than that. John, I, I appreciate your question. Of, of course, I have not taken any money from Mr. Bucci. But since you are a candidate now, I can put the same question back at you, John. Have you ever taken money from Mr. Bucci? So, as a candidate, um, well, I know, I'm just saying. Um, so, I also want to address something else that you came up in public comment and asked of, of the, uh, one of our department heads. The reason I didn't ask a question, even though a resident brought it to the table, was because in the bid, in the scope of work, it was very specific what the bid was, how many parts we were buying, what they were for, and all the way down to part numbers. So, that's in the board pack, packet for the public to view. So, I, I was comfortable with, with, I, it's there if you want to go online. So, that is why I didn't follow up with that question of, of a department head. Um, on that note, I do want to, um, that, I want to point out that on Tuesday, I get down to town hall when I can. I, I, everybody knows I'm a teacher by day and trustee by night and I had a couple days off this week from, from, um, school and I got down to town hall and I've been down, you know, again, maybe once a month or something, I'll try to pop in. And I think it's because of the time of year and, and, uh, election with the primary, but town hall was buzzing. I've never seen it like it. I literally saw a, a resident being helped at every window of the treasurer department, of the clerks department, of the building department. I saw people voting. I saw in the conference room, election workers being trained. I saw out in the lobby, I think, uh, another employee from the engineering, engineering department was helping somebody. It was, it was, um, if anybody thinks that employees aren't working during the day, they should have came down on Tuesday in the afternoon. It was, I was very, very impressed. Hopefully, everybody got a break at some point during the day. One thing I did want to ask, Mr. Meehan, we were up there before you sat down, um, I, I was hoping to ask this question. I think right now until everything plays its course in the process with the employee that we had a meeting about and talked about last week, do you think it's good practice that nobody on this board have contact with him to talk about anything relating to his disciplinary process?
Absolutely. I think that, um, because the process involves both a closed session meeting where a legal opinion was exchanged and because the open session involved, uh, re- reviewing information and documentation, uh, to keep the integrity of your entire group and the integrity of the decision, uh, and to keep the integrity of the employee, uh, that there should be no communication whatsoever as it relates to that employee at this point in time. And typically, I normally would give the same advice, had you not been so willing to make that legal opinion, which is a, um, protected attorney-client privileged document, uh, open to the public, that would have been another document that you would not have exchanged or shared with the employee or the employee's attorneys. But you guys did something that I very rarely see, uh, and that is you, uh, quickly made a motion to make that document, uh, transparent and open to the public. And I, in fact, had made sure that that information along with the exhibits were provided. Yes, sir.
And Madam Chair, one more question, I'm sorry, because Greg sat down. I, I hope I can get some leeway here. And can you make it clear that there was a, a notion brought out, you have, you have never personally told members of the board what that charge is against our supervisor, correct? There, there was a, there's a, there's a, uh, an idea out there that members of the board were told by you, like, you never told us that. The board members who do not know about the charge against a supervisor have not been told by you what that charge is, correct?
I'm confused. I think the board had always been made aware in the closed session meeting in and out and the legal opinion that you would receive from...
No, the legal opinion, but the nature of the charge. We don't know the exact thing that was reported.
I, I would disagree. I took the, um, the, I'm not sure where you're talking about...
Madam Chair, I, I, he's talking about, um, Ms. Dunn.
I'm talking about Ms. Dunn.
Oh, God, absolutely.
Yeah, there's a notion out there.
I'm confused between the employee and that. No, listen, let me disabuse that and let me be very clear in that.
Because I think it's important because there's a notion out there that some of us have found out and we're kind of sitting on it.
No, let me, let me make that clear.
I don't know what it is.
I had a wonderful email with a gentleman named Tom, Thomas, I, for the moment standing up here over on Saturday and I decided to respond back to the email because I thought, although his questions were not appropriate, uh, the questions were, were well-suited from the heart or at least from what he felt as a citizen and that dealt with Ms. Dunn and that dealt with whether or not, um, the, uh, activity that she engaged in had committed or alleged to engage in had, was a crime. Uh, you know, a crime is a conclusion, yeah, it's not a, uh, allegation. And so, anyway, um, I responded to him the same way that I've known all of you. You have been made aware, um, virtually at, at or about the same time within a day or two of, of issues of concern, uh, that the supervisor has informed you of or, or informed some of you and the others have conveyed that information to others of you and then it can be conveyed to me. With that issue, I, when I hear the words concerned and issues, the first thing I go to is that person needs to, uh, first of all, talk to a lawyer to be able to reveal that so that their rights are protected. And then number two is to self-report. Sometimes you self-report about somebody else, sometimes you self-report about your own actions, sometimes you self-report about threats and other things that are being done to you. But to answer, not to go further beyond your question, absolutely. You guys were just made aware of issues of concern and the specifics were not shared by me to you and nor to you to me. Um, in fact, the only one I really engaged in on this issue, uh, was any detail was when the clerk had, um, in my view, was concerned about, so what does the board do and, which I thought was appropriate and then I gave that memo asking her to share that with you as to what the course of action should be because, again, the transparency is important and at least the board act in an appropriate manner. Did that answer your question? And sorry for the confusion.
Yes, I just wanted you to clear that up.
Thank you, sir.
Because I don't know.
Sorry, I, I'm suffering from an injury and so, maybe the drugs that I misheard your question.
Drive safe, by the way, it's getting bad out there. I'm done, Madam Chair.
I don't have anything to add. Mr. Parkinson, I didn't take any money from Mr. Bosno, uh, Mr. Bosno.
Oh, geez, come on. That's...
Or, or Mr. Bucci.
Although I may get some baked goods from Ms. Smith when this meeting's over, but...
Treasurer's comments.
Monday is March second and is the very last day that you can pay your winter and summer taxes to the township. After that, they will go delinquent to the county and they will have their own penalties placed on them. Uh, but Monday is, uh, uh, we will be open until five p.m. because we have to be open the last day until five. So, we will be here from eight till five on Monday to accept the payments, uh, before they go delinquent to the county. But I have to say, most of our traffic at the window this week that probably Mr. Bosno saw was the water bills were due today. So, we still have a lot of people who come in and pay their water bills. The taxes are kind of winding down. I think our, most of our residents, uh, were paying, paid early, so we appreciate that because it makes, uh, uh, the entities that we send the money to happy and we like that. And also, Mr. Parkinson, I've never taken any money from Mr. Bucci. Thank you.
Clerks' comments.
We are quickly approaching the presidential primary election. I just wanted to remind, um, the residents that the clerk's office will be extending their hours next week so that we can accommodate your voting needs. You can vote by absent ballot upstairs, um, from eight a.m. to seven p.m., Monday through Thursday. Friday, we will be open until five p.m. and Saturday, we are open from eight a.m. to four p.m. So, if we can, um, accommodate your needs to help you, uh, get your voting done, we were, we're available to help you. Just to give you an update as to where we are on the absent mail-in ballots, we have issued over eleven thousand. As of today, we have received back six thousand six hundred and seventy-nine, which means there's four thousand four hundred and sixty-two ballots still out there that need to be returned to us so that we can process them on election day. So, if you do have your ballot, please, um, vote and return it back to my office as soon as possible. If you wish to receive a no reason absent mail-in ballot, uh, prior to the election, please contact my office and we'll be happy to assist you with that. And to answer the question of the evening, no, I did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor's comments. Uh, Household Hazardous Waste Day is Saturday, May second at Town Hall. Due to the construction at the senior center, it cannot be held there. Talking about the fire station, Fire Station One on Twenty-three Mile Road was torn down on Monday and the debris was hauled away to make ready for the new public safety building. Construction will begin if the snow stops. March is National Reading Month and McComb County Head Start serves one thousand and twenty-two children ages zero to five to get them ready for school. National Reading Month is a great opportunity to interest children in the joy of reading. Everyone, please drive carefully on your way home this evening and that concludes the business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Posey, support. Supported by Ms. Smith to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and we are adjourned.